Hey everybody, welcome to the Ward 7 Virtual Town Hall. My name is Marian Lowen and I'm the City Councilor for Ward 7 and I'm joined by Mayor Charlie Clark. Want to give us a wave so we know you can hear me? Affirmative, okay. So I'm really pleased that you're able to join us here, whether you're watching live or the taped replay. We know this is a bit different than the usual Ward 7 Town Hall and that there's been lots of change and in some cases stress in the lives of residents lately. And we really appreciate that you've joined us and that you're making it possible for us to have a conversation with you, even though it's not in real life. I just want to start out with a few housekeeping notes and then I'm going to turn things over to Mayor Clark for some introductory remarks, so if you'll just bear with us. I just want to start, of course, we usually start our meetings with a land acknowledgement and I want to do that again today to acknowledge that even though we're meeting separately, we're meeting on the traditional territory of the Métis and in Treaty 6 territory here in Saskatoon. And I want to thank you again for tuning in. I'm going to go through a few housekeeping items which hopefully will make this event go smoothly. First of all, I want to thank everybody who submitted a question already. We've got lots and we'll do our best to get through them. We encourage you to submit your questions through the forum on my website as opposed to using the comment function on either YouTube or Facebook. This just makes it easier for us to find your question tonight as we go. We'll be posting the link throughout the call, so if you're watching, that'll make things easier. We're going to prioritize answering questions from Ward 7 residents. We have received questions from around the city, which is great, but we want to make sure we get to Ward 7 folks first and we'll do our best to come to those other residents as quickly as possible. And for residents who have submitted multiple questions, we're going to try to get through one from everybody before we, in the first round, before we go back to answer any additional questions. And if we don't get time in the broadcast to answer your questions, we will definitely follow up via email. So be sure to use the forum and keep your email in the loop so that we can follow up with you afterwards. Finally, I just want to thank you in advance for your patience because this is the first time I have used this format for a meeting, although Mayor Clark is now a seasoned pro at these virtual town halls. So I just want to say thank you for your patience and to please let us know if you're experiencing any technical difficulties. So without any further ado, I'm going to turn things over to Mayor Clark to make some introductory remarks and comments and then we'll kick things off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Lowen and to Will, who I know is in the background making the technology happen here. This is my fifth virtual town hall that I've been able to do in the last few weeks and what we're learning through this situation where we're not able to meet in person and the feedback we're getting is it's still a really, really important time to be able to talk to people, to hear from people, what's on your mind and to stay in tune with what's going on in different neighborhoods throughout the city. And so I've actually really found it to be very valuable and very interesting to be part of these town halls for that reason, especially when we're in such an absolutely extraordinary time in all together going through the challenges of COVID and all of the uncertainty and dynamics that we're facing in the world. And so right now, you know, this is an opportunity to also talk to the community about how we're managing through it as a city and what our priorities are. And I'm not going to go on for too long, but I just want to just to point out a few key things that for the city of Saskatoon and for City Council, our priorities have been to make sure that we can keep as much of the city running, including our own governance processes and including keeping as much of the economy going and keeping as many of the services that we provide going as possible. And it's created a huge challenge and a huge amount of adaptation for the city. And I want to give credit actually to our staff, to our emergency management organizations and directors, to all of the frontline agencies and services that have been out there. Because from my point of view at least, I've just been so proud as a city at how people have come together facing this totally unprecedented situation and adapted to keep the city running. And for City Council, one of the key priorities we had is to keep as much quality of life being looked after. Those services like street sweeping, like snow clearing, like making sure your garbage is collected. The everyday things that people rely on, making sure that we were ready to provide water and sewer services and electricity, no matter what this pandemic would throw at us. And that's been a huge part of how the city has adapted. And another big part of it is to keep things like building permit requests and permits going through and as many parts of our own economic, the supports we provide to the local economy going because so many people have lost jobs. We wanted to do our part to keep as many people working as possible and as much of the economy going as possible because of the stress that this has created. And that's been something we've been very proud of. We've been keeping our City Council meetings going and our committee meetings going and all of our governance going, as well as working to make sure that no one is left behind during this pandemic. And it's been incredible to see the amount of work that's happened between different social servicing agencies through something called the inter-agency response, where a whole bunch of organizations team together and recognize that one of our biggest challenges is the homeless population and people living in poverty, people who are recently arrived here from other countries and making sure people have the information and the support they need to get through this. And so many citizens reached out and helped one another and helped organizations and helped their neighbors as part of this. And I've seen this countless, these countless examples of that kind of support and it's been absolutely incredible. And so now we're starting the reopening process. And as you've heard, we're now scrambling. We've closed the leisure centers down and closed the pools down and all these facilities. And now we're scrambling because they're allowed to open to make sure we can open them up and to open up our transit system and to be able to help people get back to enjoying the city, enjoying the summer. We know there's not going to be as many people traveling this summer to make sure that we can be there and provide the best circumstances for people as we go through this and as people get back to their lives. But we need to keep safe. We need to keep taking this virus very seriously and keep working together to keep the virus contained in our community. So that's the main thing I wanted to focus on is just our response to the pandemic because it has been remarkable to see everybody come together to deal with this. And I know now we'll get into some specific questions that are on your minds in Ward 7 and for the city as a whole. So thank you very much and thanks again to Marian for pulling all of this together.
Well, thanks very much, Charlie. I think we'll kick things off with questions right now and we're going to have, there you go, there it is. If you'd like to submit a question while you're watching, please use that link on my website and we'll do our best to get through all of them. So we're going to get started here and our first question this evening, Paul, sorry, pardon me, comes from Paul. And Paul is in the Newtown Suburban Center area. Paul's question is, "Even when the rain is coming down in buckets, I see sprinklers in Newtown Aquanous Park going full blast. Also, when stormy weather blows the water across the adjacent parking lot, I thought these systems were governed by rain and wind sensors these days." So it's a really good question. This is something we're working to make some progress on. We do have a certain degree of automation within the system, but a full automated irrigation system is something that we're working towards. We've identified that as a possible project actually that came through our MEAP. So for those not closely following the minutia of intergovernmental funding agreements, that's the funding we were very fortunate to receive from the province and we're actually just working through allocating some of that money. So improving our automation systems is one of those projects that we're considering at the current time. But I will also say that in addition to automation of irrigation, we're working to use raw water sources so that we don't need to be using drinking water to irrigate parks in Saskatoon. So we know there's some sustainability concerns with our current approach and we are very much working on how to improve those things. So that's what I would say, Charlie. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, I'm glad you caught the MEAP piece because this is, the one thing I'll say is that using better and better technology and taking advantage of some of the technological innovations that are coming to fore is a really huge opportunity for us to save money, to be more efficient, to have better conservation. And so we've been really working to figure out and identify those opportunities. And the MEAP funding, I was really happy to see in the potential applicants of a MEAP program to help to become more efficient with our water, using technology on our watering. So that's excellent, yeah.
And once again, just, we're probably going to use that abbreviation more than once today. So I'll just say again that the MEAP funding we're talking about is funding that's been granted to cities across Saskatchewan by the provincial government in response to some of the challenges of COVID-19. And so City Council is working through a process to allocate that funding so that we can keep work happening throughout the city and also make sure that we are stimulating the local economy as much as possible and making sure we're not losing ground on our civic services and programs. So thanks, Paul, for that great question. Next question comes from Ron in Avalon. This question is, "How is the city working to lower taxes?" This is a perennial question. You know, the pay has not gone up for over a decade and yet taxes keep going up. So this is something we hear often. I think I'll take a first crack on it and then I'll kick it over to the mayor. The city's main tools in keeping taxes low are to find efficiencies within the work that we do, within the services that we provide and also to improve and diversify the ways that we get revenue as a city. So those are the two major buckets, I would say, in terms of reducing property taxes for residents. I'll speak a little bit about the first piece, which is, you know, to find ways to make city services more efficient. And actually, the previous question is a good example. So doing things that reduce fuel consumption, water consumption, utility consumption as a city, as city services helps to maintain the fiscal sustainability of those programs and services. A big thing that this council has devoted a lot of time and resources to is asset management. So the general principle is having strategies to look after the things that the city owns, roads, sidewalks, pipes, buildings. And in undertaking strategic and preventative maintenance of those assets, we avoid costly and unplanned maintenance. The sort of poster child for bad asset management is the former traffic bridge. And we've all seen the very significant costs that the city can accrue when we don't look after those assets. So a more strategic approach to asset management is a savings for the taxpayer. And we're generally trying to change the way that the city grows to make more sustainable neighborhoods, to densify the core so that we can deliver services more efficiently throughout the city. And I think in the service of not talking too long, I'll try to leave it there. But I will say for folks who are interested in reading more about the city's initiatives with respect to savings and sustainability, we publish an annual report which identifies services, programs, and projects that the city has implemented, significant cost savings. So we report out on that annually. We know lots of residents want to learn about what we're doing to be good stewards of your tax dollars and that's a good way that you can catch up on some of the details. So I'm just going to turn it over to the mayor and see if he has anything to add at this point. Thank you, Ron, for that question.
I was just looking for my copy of Services Savings and Sustainability. But yeah, the only thing I would add is that, you know, the opportunities that we're seeing to become more efficient and take advantage of advances in technology are some areas that we're seeing that, whether it's with even, you know, putting GPS on our garbage trucks and all of our roadworks vehicles, graders and sanding trucks and all those things, has created a much more efficient system for us to provide those services and to make sure that we're not doing too much duplication and the routes are as efficient as possible. And we've seen hundreds of thousands of dollars of savings from things like that. We're also incorporating the Enterprise Resource Planning System because we do have a lot of outdated systems still that are operated at the city and many, many different software programs that aren't communicating with each other. And in the use and the recognition that by gathering data and by building systems that are more efficient, we can definitely save more money and resources. That's something that we're undertaking. And the last thing I'll mention is that one thing we've been talking about and I've been talking about for a long time as a City Councilor and Mayor is we have to build the city more efficiently. We need to build up more than out because the way that we've been building the city historically has been driving up our property taxes. Growth has not paid for itself. And in the last couple of years, we've actually seen almost 1,000 new units of residential on the books and applied for and in some cases now being built within the city center. That is finally the realization of that model of using already existing infrastructure and building a more efficient city that doesn't require new roads, new parks, new fire halls, all of those different things. So we know that residents want to know that every dollar you're spending through your taxes is going to get value and that you're going to see the value from that. And so it has been a priority for us to be able to look from a number of different paths to generate those savings.
Great, thanks very much. I will just add again, the report we made reference to is a Service Savings and Sustainability Report. If folks are interested in reading that, it's on our city website and it's been posted for any number of years. It's a good resource. Okay, so our next question is from Keith and Colleen in Adelaide Churchill. This question has to do with the Courtney Ash Sillid. Adelaide Churchill Park has had several affected ash trees. Will the current COVID-19 pandemic affect the removal of trees in 2020 as originally planned? And when will a decision be made about planting replacements? Will the community have an option in the replacement tree choices? So I know there are lots of areas of Ward 7 where the Courtney Ash Sillid pest has created significant damage, both in terms of people's private trees in their yard, but also in parks and on boulevards. And I do want to say, we are doing our best to make progress on the replacement of these trees because we know it's a big part of our urban forest and a big part of what makes our public spaces really appealing and it has a significant ecological value as well. So there are, I wanted to say specifically about Adelaide Churchill Park, that there are two trees there that are scheduled for removal this year and the pandemic has not had an impact on that schedule. We do have a replanting program, but the way that the replanting strategy is rolling out, there's going to be a priority given to areas of the city that have lost a huge amount of trees. And so that'll kind of happen in a rolling way. This park, because it's only losing two trees, is going to have a lower priority for replacement. But there is an opportunity for the community to provide feedback about the kinds of trees that go in place of the ash trees that have died. So I would suggest if you have an interest in weighing in on that, you could contact me, you could contact your community association. And for, I know there are lots of parks, lots of residents that have been affected by this. If you have questions about specific trees, feel free to reach out to me and we will, well, excuse me, do our best to get specific information back for you. So Charlie, anything you want to add to that one? I think you were maybe muted there. Do you want to repeat yourself?
Okay, now I'm lost. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay, you covered it very well. I don't have anything to add but to the, on the tree.
Great, okay. So next up, we're going to talk about mobility. We have a question here about the use of mobility aids for transportation. This resident, Kathy, is in the Eastview area, is wondering when the city will address alternative forms of transportation like scooters, electric wheelchairs, and other advancing technology for priority lane use? Meaning, instead of developing bike lanes, should we be looking at a more inclusive use in these lanes? Our community needs to protect seniors and those with disabilities. And I think this is an excellent question. And I think from our conversations so far, we haven't talked much about having on-street lanes that would be dedicated for anything beyond cycling. And I think part of the reason for that is that there are potential interactions or competition between users that might not be totally safe. And our typical bike lane width is probably not sufficient to accommodate people using mobility devices and cycling at the same time. But I think what this does highlight is a need to make better connections and improvements to our pedestrian realm in general. Because I see it often where people are using mobility devices in a vehicular lane because the sidewalks are not, either not cleared of snow or not smooth enough to use. So I think it's really important for us to be working on connecting those gaps in the system. Our council has spent a lot of time talking about this as well in two major categories. One is trying to identify inaccessible sidewalks and stretches of multi-use pathway and making those accessible through curb cuts. And another is trying to bridge the gaps that exist with sidewalks in the city. So lots of Ward 7 residents will know neighborhoods built in the 50s and 60s, sidewalks come and go in a way that doesn't totally make sense. And so we're trying to bridge those gaps, to create sidewalks where they don't currently exist. This is another major project on our potential list for that provincial MEAP funding. And I think that's one way in which we can make some serious progress on accessibility throughout the city. I think, so to make a long answer short, I think we're not talking specifically about combining all of those uses into a single on-road lane, but we can certainly talk more as a council, I think, as we navigate some of these decisions around sidewalks and pathways, how we can improve accessibility for people with mobility challenges. So I'll stop there, but give the mic over to Charlie for any comments.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that, you know, back about six, seven years ago, there was a cycling advisory group that was focused on some of these sort of active transportation issues. But I had the concern that that group didn't include seniors and pedestrians and scooters and a lot of the other users on the road. And so through conversation at council and with our city staff, what we did is we created the Active Transportation Advisory Group and we made sure that there was a representation from senior citizens on that group so that we weren't just talking about cycling. And that's been a very informative process to help ensure that as we are looking at all of the transportation needs in the city, we're considering all of the users, it's more difficult to put a dedicated lane for each user. But so what we need to continue to do is to identify the barriers and opportunities for people to get around safely, whether on whatever mechanism that people are using. And so we've been trying to, and the other thing I was going to mention is that in the Newtown Suburban Center area, that's been an area of focus around Market Mall, given the high population of seniors, where we're looking at how do we be innovative in that area and to particularly recognize how valuable it is for people to get out safely, to travel around, to go to appointments, to go meet people for coffee or shopping or to get to the bus or whatever it might be. And really try and design the most pedestrian, senior-friendly area that we possibly can. And so there's been some ongoing conversations about that as well and then learning from that and building it out to other parts of the city.
Okay, so thank you very much. I think our next question is going to be from Ted in Stonebridge. And Ted's question is, "Has there ever been an actual noise survey done in Stonebridge beside the highway or the railroad? And if not, how does one request for one to be done?" So to the best of my knowledge, there hasn't been any recent noise evaluation near the highway or the railroad. Residents in Stonebridge are familiar with this, but there's been years of concern around the noise, both from whistling but also just the noise of trains and vibrations from trains running south of the city. There is some progress being made on that file and no small part due to residents in Stonebridge who have been very organized and persistent in trying to get a whistling cessation policy put in place. So to cease the use of train whistles, which will make a difference. But on the subject of a noise study specifically, there hasn't been a recent one. So the way that that would work if residents wanted to request a noise study was that they could contact me or come through the Transportation Committee to work with our staff to get that on the list for evaluation. But I do want to caution that the city has a fairly limited variety of approaches to rectifying vehicular noise in terms of creating sound barriers. Our sound wall program is not one that has an oversupply of resources. We're trying to find other ways to mitigate sound because of the immense cost of sound walls. Stonebridge already has berm's adjacent to roadways and railways and so those wouldn't be good candidates for sound walls because building a sound wall on top of a berm is a very tricky thing to do successfully. So I would say that's how you would get underway with a noise study, but I also just want to be cautious that it's not, it's not easy for us to take that noise data and turn it into a solution in a really speedy way because of the limitations we have around resources and around engineering, particularly in the Stonebridge area. So that's probably not the most optimistic answer, but I think it's important to try to give the context for what's happening in Stonebridge. Anything to add to that, Your Worship?
That was a very thorough response, thanks.
Okay, so the next question has to do with flooding. And I'm just going to read from Dallas here in Avalon. "Will the city create a fund or some way for flood victims to get reimbursement for damages not covered under insurance or the provincial disaster program? If so, how and when will it be made available? And if not, why is the city turning its backs on its residents that are victims of a city issue?" So thank you, Dallas, for the question. I think the city's approach to the surface flooding issues, which unfortunately crop up in a couple of different parts of Ward 7 and also Ward 6, well, among other wards, but those are the ones that are kind of connected. The city's approach there has been to try to rectify those through infrastructure fixes rather than compensation to individual homeowners. And that's been a longstanding issue. We've spent a lot of time trying to figure out the right approach. And I know one of the problems with this process is that it has not been quick. But without having been said, I think we are making some material progress now on this issue. Excuse me. And we now have at least a couple of infrastructure fixes in place. One is, of course, the Storm Ponding Project at Ashley Park. One is, of course, the storm ponding project at Ashley Park, where we're going to try to reduce the pressure on the underground infrastructure by creating a storm pond where runoff can go from extreme rain events. So in answer to Dallas's question, we do not have an immediate plan to create a fund of any kind to pay out to residents directly. What the city is instead attempting to do is to fix the problem with the infrastructure that's causing the flooding. But I recognize that this isn't what everybody wants to hear, especially in the middle of a rain event. We're doing our best with this one. It's been a challenging issue because the infrastructure fixes are not uncomplicated and they are not inexpensive. But we were fortunate to get some federal funding, which allowed us to move more quickly on the first project, and we hope that the rest will not be too far behind us. So that's what I wanted to share on that. Anything from you, Your Worship?
Yeah, I, as when I was a councillor for Ward 6, I had the, actually, experience of going into a basement on First Avenue near Dufferin and having four inches of water with a cork floor floating around my ankles of a cork floor that had just been laid down because the basement had been flooded about five weeks earlier. This is back in the summer when we had two back-to-pack incredibly intense storms. And so, and talking to the residents, I've also been in the basement of Early Drive residents facing very challenging, facing basement flooding in 2018 after an intense storm. And so I know how awful and frustrating this is for people to go through. And I've been very happy that we've been able to secure funding of $20 million from the federal government to begin to rectify these issues. In reality, the city does not provide insurance or those types of services. That is under the provincial jurisdiction. So what the city has been doing is looking at how do we come up with both the resources and the infrastructure solutions to address this? And it's a significant undertaking to do it. But we are making progress, and we've done a lot of work to generate through getting the federal money and also through building and creating a whole stormwater utility that is generating funds to help us to address some of these issues.
Thanks very much, Your Worship. That's an issue across probably almost every ward in the city, so it's an important one. I'm going to take, the next question here is from Deb in Adelaide Park Churchill. Deb asks, I am interested if there has been feedback gathered from the Adelaide Park Churchill community in regards to the Churchill Gardens development. The development has been in place for six years plus now. The pros and cons could help Saskatoon residents understand sustainable development. That's a really interesting question, and I think it's a good idea. I was elected to council after the decision had been made to rezone the Churchill School site for condominium development, but before the construction began. And I know it was, there was a lot of controversy in the neighborhood at the time. And I will say, my observation as councillor through the construction process, and now that the condos have been in place for a while, is that during the construction phase, there were concerns around vehicular and construction noise, dust, and so forth. And then the first couple of years after the condos were in place, I think the major issue had to do with access to the site and traffic on the alley along Clarence. But I will say that my observation is that a lot of the worst-case scenario fears that people had articulated during the construction phase and even during the rezoning application process haven't seemed, they don't seem to me to have been realized. I think one thing I've observed actually is a lot of people from the surrounding neighborhood moving into those condos as they think about downsizing from a big yard and so on. So from my point of view, it's been a successful example of infill development. But I think it's a really interesting idea to ask neighborhoods that have gone through these kinds of projects, what went well and what didn't, as we try to take some of the controversy out of densification and infill. So thanks for the prompt and for asking us to think about that. Your Worship, have anything to add to that?
Well, just that I was on council for that rezoning meeting, and I remember at the end of 32 speakers, leaning over and talking to Glenn Penner, who was a councillor for a long time, and he said that he thought that that was the most public speakers that he had seen at any meeting. It was a very intense debate and a discussion, and it was a balance of all these different forces. But from what I've seen since Churchill Gardens has gone in as well, that it by and large has provided another option for housing within the neighborhood, particularly for seniors, so people can grow in place. Some of the concerns around traffic and so on along Ruth, you know, from what I understand, have not been generated directly from that building. And I think there are lessons to be learned from these and to engage with residents as well to find out. I haven't heard a lot of concern about the development, but in looking and hearing from people in the neighborhood what they think six years later, that's a good idea. Because we have, cities always grow and change, and finding the best way to do it that has the best outcomes for people is really important. And creating public hearings where there's 32 people, most of them angry and mad at us, is not the best way to do these things.
Okay, thank you very much. So the next question we're going to go to is from Ari, also in Adelaide Churchill. Adelaide Churchill is really representing strongly tonight. Thanks for all the questions. Ari asks, prior to the pandemic, the city had a number of initiatives, and the examples he provides are the new library and the new leisure center. All have value, but in light of the stress of COVID on the city's finances, which, if any, of those projects do you foresee deferring until the city's economy recovers? This is a really good question, and it's one that I think we've both probably been asked throughout, you know, the last few months. So I'm just going to pick up on the library really quickly. You know, the library, it's a bit of a complex project because it's actually overseen by the library board. What the city does is essentially like co-sign the mortgage. We approve the capital budget and the borrowing limit for the library, but the decisions about the library itself are made by that board. And that capital project is overseen by that board. And the reason I bring that up is because I think it's important to just make clear to the public where our decision-making space is on these kinds of projects. As far as I'm concerned, I don't think deferring the library project is a necessary move at this point. The city is not actually contributing cash to the project. What we're contributing is borrowing space, like I said, kind of co-signing that mortgage for the library. And it's also not at the point in its design where we're talking about shovels in the ground. I actually think the economic spinoffs from a project of that nature are something the city's economy will likely benefit from as we try to move out of a period of, you know, a small recession or depression, whatever this turns out to be. But I think from my point of view, it would be a different situation if there was a commitment of a cash grant to the project, because that's not the case. I personally am not interested in deferring that project. I also want to specify that although there's lots of talk of a new leisure center for the city, we're not at a stage where we've even identified a site or begun to scope out the project details of a new leisure center. So there's really nothing to defer there. I think, from my point of view, the best approach in terms of economic recovery is to try to generate activity in the community as much as possible, to create jobs and to make sure that the economy stays as functional as it can, without creating any additional tax burdens for residents. So that's kind of the lens I'm using to approach decision-making as we think about future projects. I expect the mayor might have something he wants to add to that. But in answer to your question, Ari, I don't think we're likely to defer the library project, but we would, I think, be cautious about diving into any other big capital projects at this point, new buildings and so forth, under the circumstances, we'd need to be pretty judicious about that. Your Worship?
Well, yeah, I have the same view. I don't think it would be wise financially to defer the library. What we have heard loud and clear is that what we need to do to keep the economy going is to keep moving and investing in infrastructure. It's for that same reason we're rolling out a full capital plan of spending on our roads and our pipes and in order to keep people working. And the reality is that now, as we've heard from many people, is actually a good time to make infrastructure investments because you can get competitive bids, it's a good time, you can borrow money cheaply, and you can keep the economy going. So in terms of having an overall impact on supporting the health of our community and economy, looking at continuing to develop these areas, not willy-nilly, but in the case of the library, it's a project that will not be completed to 2026. It's not going to have immediate financial negative impacts, but by deferring it, we would save almost no money. But by potentially capitalizing in the design phases, and as Mayor and said, Councillor Lowen said, it's not city dollars per se, it's the library, its own operating fund and its own taxation system that comes through. I do not believe we would save money, but we can benefit from the competitive environment to build right now. And that's the advice we're getting from a lot of business leaders as well as we go through this.
Thanks, Your Worship. So we've got a number of questions that are kind of similar in theme here. So what I'm going to try to do is ask one that I think represents the category. So we had questions on this topic from Natalie, Sydney, and Jamie, so thank you to those three. I'm going to read Natalie's question because I think it kind of covers the whole gamut. Natalie's question is, why is the budget for the Saskatoon Police Service so high? Can we instead put more funding into community supports rather than law enforcement that disproportionately targets Black and Indigenous people? So thanks very much for your questions, all. Actually councillor, sorry, Charlie, I just gave you a demotion. The mayor and I are both on Board of Police Commissioners. So I will say there are a couple of reasons why the police budget is a significant portion of our, of anyone's tax dollar. It's about 20 cents of each tax dollar goes to police. The biggest factor there is salaries, which is kind of consistent with lots of other parts of City Hall in terms of that being a big expenditure. But I will also say that every time we hire officers, there are capital needs that come along with that. So for example, vehicles, equipment, and so that's a big, big part of the growth there. I will also say that I think there are, and I don't exactly, I can't trace, you know, how this trend began, maybe it was always thus. But one thing that's become clear to me in my time on the police commission is that there are a number of things, a large number of things, that are delegated to the police that are, of course, not really police matters, they don't have to do with a crime. And this was clearly laid out for me a couple of months ago when we received a report at the commission about calls to dispatch. And about 40% of the calls, 911 calls to the police in Saskatoon in 2019, didn't have to do with a crime. It was a call perhaps about mental health, family breakdown, addictions, public intoxication, those kinds of issues which have been delegated to the police, even though they're not technically police matters. And that is obviously not the most cost-effective way to direct those kinds of community needs, and not necessarily the most effective overall. And actually, I think Saskatoon Police has been very clear that, you know, in terms of tackling vulnerability in the community and so forth, the police can't, nor should they be the entity singularly responsible for that. So to Natalie's question about whether or not we can direct funding into community supports rather than law enforcement, I think the answer is yes. But I would qualify that by saying that I think that's really done most effectively in a collaborative way. The city, and this isn't true of all cities, this isn't even really true of most American cities, but in the city of Saskatoon, we don't have funding or jurisdiction or responsibility for things like social services, mental health, addictions, those kinds of things, education. And so it's not just as simple as saying, hey, you know, this is actually going to the wrong place, let's move it over to our other department. I think what it would require is a collaborative approach to tackle the root causes of vulnerability and victimization in the community. And I think that's something we should be focused on because, you know, we've got a lot of challenges in our community that we're not able to effectively meet at this time. So I would say there are ways for us to do that differently. I think we, I think we need to do that with other orders of government, principally the provincial government, in order for that to be as effective as possible. And of course, with the local community organizations who know the community best and have the best connections with community members. So that's a pretty long way to address the question. But I'm sure that Merrick Clark has something he'd like to add, so I'll turn it over to You Worship.
Yeah, last week at the Board of Police Commissioners meeting, I brought forward a motion to try and help us as a community have a more informed discussion about what I believe are some really, really important points that have been brought up and as Councillor Lowen has identified. Right now, the system is not working properly. We have way too many cases where police are responding to issues that are not about violence or direct criminal situations or threats. It's people who are in mental health distress, who are dealing with addictions, where there's family breakdown, and some of the impacts of poverty within a community. And the police are the last resort. In my view, I don't believe it would be effective or smart for us to simply just cut the police budget and to recognize that that's the case right now. Because the reality is, the existing systems are not in place to make sure that there's other people there to meet and address those needs. And the city doesn't provide, isn't responsible for the mental health supports, the addiction supports, child and protective services, the family supports, and suicide prevention, and a lot of these issues that are needed to be addressed. But what we've done at the police commission is ask for a report that really outlines as clearly as we can, where are the gaps in the system? Because frankly, I mean, this is something I've been talking about ever since I got elected on council. Right now, the police are effectively picking up the pieces of a broken system, and it's not providing good enough outcomes to get people housed and safe, to help people deal with their mental health challenges or their addictions, and to reduce the cycle of incarceration that we're seeing for youth in our community. We have to do better. But it's going to take a coordinated approach among the city, city police, working with the great community agencies we have in our community, and organizations like the Tribal Council and the Mady Community, and those very important provincial ministries. And I feel responsible for making sure our community is both safe and addressing community well-being, and we need to do that as thoughtfully, but in a bold way as we can.
Thanks, Your Worship. I just want to conclude by saying that the Board of Police Commissioners is a body that ultimately acts as a link between the public and the police service. And one of the duties of the Board of Police Commissioners is to hear feedback from the community. We have a public agenda every month. Residents are welcome to write and to attend. Of course, attending at this point in time means phoning in. But we really do welcome engagement from the public about this. I think all parties at the table are interested in finding approaches to community safety that are sustainable and that are more effective and more targeted in terms of meeting the needs in our community. So I just would, I would welcome for those who are interested in this issue, and I know there's been a lot of interest in this issue lately, and I think that's really great. I would encourage you to engage with the police commission. We'd be happy to hear from you. That's our job at the commission table. So I think we're going to move next. We have another grouping of questions here that are kind of about the pedestrian and cyclist realm. So I'm going to ask a question from Robin in Stonebridge, who I think has, this kind of sums up the other groups of questions. Robin asks, and she poses this specifically to the mayor, wondering if there is any possibility that the city might yet change its mind on opening streets for pedestrians and businesses to expand operations outdoors during the pandemic? We've seen enough evidence from other cities that have done it, that this practice does not lead to increased transmissions, and I'm sure it would help out a lot of small businesses who don't have large parking patios, et cetera. So Merrick Clark, I want to take the first crack at that one, and I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, and I've actually been in touch with some of the business improvement districts about this, and I agree that when it comes to creating patios and making it easier for restaurants to have pat- And um I agree that when it comes to creating patios and and making it easier for restaurants to have patios, to me, patios are a great thing for many, many reasons. They put more eyes on the street, they create vibrancy on a on a street, it makes it feel safer. It uh it utilizes uh public space to to create all those experiences. It can be inexpensive. Um, and right now, uh in the pandemic, when when restaurants, those great local restaurants that we really want to support, have to use space and spread people out, to creating more opportunities for them to do that, um is to me a great opportunity. And so I uh understand there's going to be some uh conversations at council about this. There's a letter that's coming forward related to some, a number of requests about how do we support businesses. Um, and so uh I I'm hopeful that we can see that. I, the one thing I also am aware of is that there's a number of businesses that are just trying to survive. And in hearing from the Business Improvement Districts, um also implementing and developing out these patios is uh is going to be tricky in terms of uh of rolling them out in some cases. But I I can see a lot of benefits. We have a short summer, um and we're going to have a lot of people around this summer who might have otherwise been on other vacations. And so I think we'd like to to be able to address that. And I don't know if the question was also in reference to roads, but um this is something we've thought about and talked about. And um I certainly immediately, when some of these issues happened with the uh pandemic, thought, okay, well, you know, would it make sense to uh close down the traffic bridge just for for people to have more room and more space or some of these streets uh like Sass Crescent or Spadina? Um, as time went on, we started to see people really flocking to those areas and realized that if we advertise street closures on those main places that uh people are most likely to go, we're actually going to create um the the problem that we were trying to avoid, which is congregations of people because the the River Valley is so beautiful and so attractive. And um and um I know many cities have been doing this, we've been watching. And um if we were to do it in Saskatoon, it would, I believe it would make more sense to do it spread out throughout the whole city. But what we haven't seen is the real demand outside of those key corridors. And on those key corridors, I saw a question about Sass Crescent. People are using those streets and um and especially in on the quieter streets like Sass Crescent um and uh and interacting and creating some space. Um, and without it being an official closure that would would potentially draw people there. So over time, I see opportunities for us to have more street closures uh for pedestrians and cyclists and to just enjoy them safely. But under the pandemic and under the advice of our uh our EMO, um uh that that just hasn't come together as a as a something that has been a need uh in in this case.
Well, thanks, Your Worship. Um, I think the only thing I would add, which is essentially just to agree, is to say that, um, you know, at a at a time, although it would have been wonderful to be able to accommodate this uh kind of request, particularly in the earlier uh periods of the pandemic, I think, um, it was uh difficult to envision a scenario where we could both ask our civic administration to focus on uh the most essential uh elements of of the city and also create new projects at the same time. And and I think, oh, it shows to some degree that we don't, we are not a place that has a a lot of muscle memory in terms of spontaneously creating uh cycling or pedestrian infrastructure. It's something we need to get better at. And so um I think what this has shown us is the value of of that people have for public space in Saskatoon. And I hope we can think about, uh as as the mayor said, how we can think about more uh public realm access uh in a more predictable way in the future. Uh, because I I heard it throughout um the the first months of the pandemic in particular, that this is something people were really looking for. So hopefully, we can make progress on that in a longer term way, and I very much appreciate the question. So we are going to go next to, uh, there's another group of questions here about alleys, back lanes. I'm going to read a question from Glenda that I think speaks to the most of them. Um, Glenda is in Queen Elizabeth, and Glenda asks, is the purpose of grading alleys to level them? Prior to my alley grading, I would have rated my alley condition quite good as an eight out of ten. Now it is about a four. Rating mostly startup dirt, grass, pot, gravel to one side and created more low spots. So this is another perennial issue in Ward Seven, where almost every neighborhood has back lanes that are quite old. Um, a- and yeah, leveling them is definitely a major point of alley maintenance. Um, particularly uh to ensure the drainage, because if the alleys aren't draining properly, it leads to potholes. Um, but I I would say that it it's a challenge to meet everybody's needs and expectations. Um, we uh often get requests to add more fill and often get requests to use less. Um, the reality is that lots of these lanes are are quite old. In some cases, they've degraded and um and it's a bit of a challenge to to get them into a condition where everyone uh is getting what they need, the alley's draining well, and it's got a decent level surface for driving. Um, I'm sorry to hear that this did not meet that expectation. Um, I I encourage residents, if they have specific site-specific issues, uh to just shoot me an email and I'll do my best to follow up. But yeah, I mean, that's the that's the general purpose, um, is to try to keep them level, grading properly, so that they can function well um in the in the fall and winter, as well as in the summer. Anything you'd like to add to that, Your Worship? I know you did a lot of time on back lanes as a Ward Counselor.
Only that, um, I would say as a council, a big priority has been investing in our core services and infrastructure. And um and that's uh been from from making sure we're doing a better job of maintaining lanes, to fixing sidewalks, fixing roads, and investing in in the those basic um parts of the city that everybody wants to uh, that that everybody relies on every day to get around. And um and we know that in order to to be able to address any of the other complicated issues in a city, um, we need to look after the basics, and uh and that's been a real priority.
Thanks, Your Worship. So we had a couple of questions about green bins, and I'm just going to group those together so that we can uh we can get those both tackled. We are running low on time. We, I think we can probably go a couple of minutes over and see if we can squeeze in a few more questions. Um, so the questions about green bins were um were related to, first of all, why is it picked up in the front uh instead of in the back? And uh the second question had to do with uh why can't it be a weekly pickup? So um the front street pickup is, you know, because of um, well, this is actually kind of related to the back lane question too. But uh front street pickup is just more efficient for our for our crews. Um, it's uh easier and less costly to pick up bins in the front than it is in the back alley. It creates less wear and tear on the lanes. So uh because it's a, it's not a program where every house has a green bin, we don't want to be sending uh crews down the back lanes um to get one or two bins. And uh front street is just a more, it's a more cost-effective way to do it. Uh, as for pickup frequency, I think the um, the the main issue with moving to a weekly pickup at this point is that our current green bin program runs at a loss, which is, from my point of view, a totally acceptable thing to do because it's providing a significant ecological benefit by keeping organic material out of the landfill. Um, but to run it weekly, I think, would come with additional operating costs, um, which I'm I'm not sure would be sustainable. Now, I will say that the city is moving towards a city or citywide uh annual, that's not the right word, uh year-long, there we go, um, green bin pickup program, uh which, when it rolls out, admittedly not until twenty twenty-three, but when it does roll out, then uh that'll be available all year long. So hopefully, that'll reduce some pressure for folks who are needing more frequent green bin collection. Um, it would be great if we could, we could get to a more frequent tech collection. Uh, but at this point, it's probably not financially sustainable for us to to do that before we move to the citywide program. So I'm just going to ask, uh, Your Worship, do you have anything to add on that one?
I think you covered that one well, Counselor Lowen, and I know we're running low on time, so I'll uh, I'll, I'll pass.
Great. Okay, so we are going to go to our next question here. Uh, pardon me while I just do a little scrolling. So the next question is coming from Jamie, and Jamie asks, what can Saskatoon do to achieve a zero-carbon electricity supply? Um, this is a great question. Um, one thing we've talked about a lot in the last year is um, is uh our low emissions community plan and opportunities for the city and for the community. So the city as a corporation, but the community as a whole, to reduce its emissions. And uh as a result, uh we've identified a few projects um that they're certainly not going to get us to that zero-carbon point in the next couple of years, but are are hopefully going to decrease our our dependence on non-renewable uh energy. Um, and and some projects or programs within that uh umbrella of the low emissions community plan include things like a large utility-scale solar project, which we expect we can make progress on in the next couple of years. Uh, ongoing exploration of the potential for renewable energy project at the Weir. Uh, some, we're really excited about the possibility of a PACE program through the province, a program that would uh enable residents to uh to make energy efficiency investments in their homes. A major source of emissions in Saskatoon is is buildings and inefficiency within buildings. And so those we see as opportunities to to improve our emissions uh situation, both as a corporation, as an organization, but as a community. Um, Your Worship, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, I I would just to say that um the low emissions community plan is a very important document to actually take this conversation about what can we do about climate change from an abstract and in many cases divisive um discussion to some very practical um tangible steps that uh that we can take. And uh that, to me, is really important. Uh, we have to recognize that the world is moving in this direction. And if we don't play our part and be part of the innovation, the problem solving, um, the emissions reduction, we we will be at risk of being left behind. And what we've seen through the this development of the low emissions community plan is some really interesting opportunities arise. And in working with partners like Federated Co-op and Nutrien and um and the Home Builders Association uh to uh to find solutions, and the Saskatoon Tribal Council and different um different groups that are coming forward with ideas about uh new new opportunities for solar development, new opportunities for biomass development, uh like you said, hydro potentially at the Weir, um, and also things like retrofitting uh houses uh to create jobs in the construction industry, as well as better buildings for people to live in, as well as more cost-efficient houses for people to live in, as well as reducing emissions. And so we have to move on from this uh this debate over whether uh climate change is real and that consuming everything, and move into what things can we do? And how do we create opportunities and solutions and um and ensure that we're part of the solution? And that's what the young people in our community are are um are asking. So uh I think it's an important question to discuss.
Agreed, and we actually had a few questions come in that were sort of on that general theme, uh including one person who was looking for a more detailed response. So uh for, we're, because we're short on time, I'm uh I'm going to just commit to follow up with folks who haven't had their question answered by email and and try to share as much detail as possible. So, Your Worship, if you're okay to do a couple more questions here, um, I think I'll just assume that you are. And our next question um is from Jan and Lawrence in Queen Elizabeth. And they ask, noisy vehicles are incredibly intrusive. Is it possible to ban modified systems to eliminate noise pollution? This is a a topic we've been discussing quite a bit at council lately. Um, the short answer is that uh the city, the major issue for the city here is enforcement. Uh, unlike things uh like speeding, uh, we can't catch noise with a camera. And we we don't have an enforcement mechanism that's been reliable and um and effective enough for us to roll out in the same kind of widespread way that we have with, for example, red light cameras or speed cameras. Um, and even speed enforcement in a traditional way is is easier to achieve. So um we have been talking about this a lot lately. We recognize this is uh impeding people's quality of life, and particularly in the summers, when um and that season is short and precious, and people want to be outside, this is a real disruption. So recently, we have approved um uh the commissioning of an additional study with uh some experts in this area to to try to discern what we might be able to do differently in Saskatoon. Um, and and we're hoping that we'll be able to uh to tackle that i- in the next little while here. This is another project that we were talking about in the context of our MEAP funding, that provincial funding um that we've received from the province. And so we may be able to make some fairly quick progress on that study. Um, but I uh, this is one where there's no quick solution. We're going to have to work with what other cities are doing and look for some expertise that we might be able to transfer to our own community to try to tackle this issue. So, Your Worship?
Yeah, I, first of all, I want to say this is a, it's a frustrating issue, and and um and it's affecting a lot of people, and it's about being, primarily about being good neighbors. And um and I I find it disappointing the to the amount of uh concerns that are coming forward of people who are modifying mufflers, um and then and then driving them very loud and uh and obnoxiously in areas where people are trying to sleep, and especially during COVID, people are at home just trying to live their lives. And and in some neighborhoods and in some areas along Eighth Street and Spadina and um and down Broadway and and in different areas, it's it's having a big impact. Um, and so the other part of the question, in addition to what uh Counselor Lowen said about how we're trying to do a better job um of enforcement, we are also um working on talking to SGI and the provincial government about making regulations to restrict the modification of mufflers uh to be able to make uh and to sell them uh to try and restrict that. One of the big things we need to do is to really um is to appeal to people, to think about your neighbors when you're in the community, and um and to to just don't, don't drive around in these noisy vehicles. But for those who are, um, we are are continuing to look at how can we um uh make it less easy to do that and and to have enforcement in place to restrict it. So um i- it's a, it's a challenging issue that's been challenging for a while, but in the last few months, it's really escalated, I think, because uh I think largely of people being home um and and facing the stress of COVID.
Thanks, Your Worship. So I think we'll, we'll try to squeeze in a couple more here. The next question I uh have is from Laura in Adelaide Churchill. Is there any chance we will get a new civic center indoor pool on this side of the city? And this is, this is actually a question I get a lot from residents in Stonebridge, too. Um, because, of course, it's a huge neighborhood and uh and there's, there's no leisure facility in that neighborhood. So um, we have identified a couple of areas of need for leisure facilities in Saskatoon, and one of those is in the northeast sector. Uh, another would be the potential of expanding leisure um facilities in the core of the city. So uh I think, you know, and we talked about this a little bit earlier in the context of uh the city's finances in in COVID recovery. Um, we don't have any concrete and defined plans around exactly where that facility would go, um, the project details, what it might include. But I will say that uh that that has been identified as um the northeast sector of the the east side. So neighborhoods like Willow Grove and Evergreen and that that neck of the woods. Um, I think that there is a a a clearly demonstrated need there. And now the question is, how do we fund that? Where where does it go? What does it include and so forth? So we're a long ways away from from putting any shovels in the ground on that one. But I uh I do want to be clear that that is something the city has identified as a as a priority. So I think the answer is, yes, there will be, but we don't know when, and we don't exactly know where at this point. Your Worship, anything you want to add on the leisure quest question?
No, no, you covered it.
Okay, thanks very much. So uh the next question we have uh is uh um from Deb, who asks, um, what do you see as a key way for our citizens across the city to come together and assist in mental health and addictions concerns? Oh, this is an excellent question, and it's a hard one. Um, I think that one thing that um the city as a community can do is um, is there's a lot of knowledge and there's a lot of um expertise in our community. Um, and what we are often lacking is connection and and resources. And so I would say um we uh, what residents can do to support uh better services in tackling mental health and addictions is is um taking a moment to get in touch with your elected representatives at all levels of government. Um, because it's really, from my point of view, the most effective way to tackle these issues um and to to care for the vulnerable citizens in the community is uh is to do that collaboratively between governments and between the organizations who serve those communities directly. So um I think uh greater So I think greater collaboration is is probably the the most critical factor here. And so letting your elected representatives know that this is important to you is a wonderful idea. And I would also say that I think, you know, there are going to be some opportunities in the fairly near future here. We know that issues in the downtown have been in the news, this safe injection site, these are all really important as we think about how to best support vulnerable people in the community and create more equitable conditions for our residents. So making your voices known, letting people know that this is a priority issue for you is really important because, I'll be honest, that doesn't often come across our desk, not as often as other infrastructure-related issues, for example. So it's really important for us to hear from residents that you care about that and we will continue to work to have effective and collaborative leadership in tackling those issues. Your Worship?
Yeah, it's a huge issue. I guess the only things I would add are there's a lot of great organizations in the city that are really worth supporting, who are really on the front sign, on the front lines when it comes to mental health and addictions. And and so I would I would go out there and and work with them. People, I think mentorship is a big thing. Organizations like Big Brothers and Big Sisters or or the CMHA where people can volunteer and and connect up and be a support for people is really, really valuable. When it comes to mental health and addictions, people need connection, as 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 Counselor Owen said. And we can all play a role in doing that. And I've been saying, and I believe it's time for us to all say together to all levels of government, that we have to do better. Our systems are not working as well as they can. And and that we can make improvements. We can learn from best practices in other countries. We can coordinate better. This whole discussion we had earlier about policing and mental health is is really an indication that that right now, the system is not working as well as it could. And we we really, I think, believe deserve to live in a city and a province where where we're striving to be the best we can be to look after each other and to look after people who need it. So I appreciate the question. And it's something we have to demand of each other and and of all levels of government to 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 look after people's health.
Thanks very much. So we have one more question and then we'll just have time for a couple concluding remarks. The next question that we have is from Les. And Les asks, do we have any more money to pave our roads? The main roads are a mess. So the answer is yes, we we are dedicating more money to road paving than ever before. And and as I mentioned at the beginning of the broadcast, I think the one of the things this council has spent a lot of time and energy and resources on is managing our assets. And roads are no exception. And everybody who lives in the city knows that we're playing catch up. And that we had a long period where we were underfunding, critically underfunding assets like roads and sidewalks, back lanes, water mains. And so we're catching up. And and so what that means is like, there are going to continue to be frustrations with the quality of certain roadways, particularly in older neighborhoods. But the approach that we're taking now is a strategic one to care for assets in the most effective way possible. So that means you might see a road being paved or or micro-surface that you might say to yourself, well, that road's not in that bad shape and this one over here is much worse. And 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 the reason that that's being approached in that way is to try to preserve the assets that are still in decent shape so that we don't have to do a full overhaul, fully rebuild the road. We are also talking in the context of our MEEP provincial funding conversation about improving our funding levels for sidewalk replacement. And for for general asset management plans in the most recent budget, we made significant improvements to our parks, asset management plans, sidewalks and roads. So this is a real area of focus. It has been a real area of focus for this council. We know we've got a ways to go in terms of meeting everybody's needs and expectations. But we are, we've made significant process progress in in making sure these assets are are functioning well and are going to be preserved for future residents in the most cost effective way possible. So thanks for that question, Your Worship. Anything to add to that one?
Okay, sorry. Well, we have more than doubled the amount of of money that we're putting into roadways. It was $61 million in 2019. And so this has been a priority. We, I still remember back in around 2008, 2009, people were comparing our roads to being like a third world country. And and it was a real priority to make sure that we could invest in and look after roads. And I hope people are seeing that. I hope people are seeing it on the main arterials. And I hope people are seeing it in the neighborhoods as we move through neighborhood by neighborhood and completely overhaul those 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 areas with new sidewalks, new roads, new underground services. It's like retrofitting your own house or doing a full renovation on your own house. We've been doing it neighborhood by neighborhood and we're working our way through. There's a roadways preservation plan that you can find on the on our website that will lay out which streets are coming up and which streets have been done. But I'm very proud of the progress that we've made. There's still more streets to be done. But it has been a a big priority to make sure that we can create neighborhoods that people really feel proud of.
Thanks, Your Worship. Very well put. So I'm just gonna make a couple of general comments because there are a couple of themes that we didn't get to. And I want to let people know how they can find information about that. One thing was we had a number of specific requests around when will this road be paved or this road? We do, because of the asset management plans that we've put into place, we can forecast with some degree of certainty when roads in certain neighborhoods are going to get paved. And so if you're interested in learning about your road or a road in your neighborhood, please contact me and I can confirm for you what the what the plan is for those roads. We also had a question about how to present to council if you have an idea or a concern. And I would just direct you to the city website. And there is, if you were to just search on the city website, presenting to council, there's a little how to guide. We really welcome public participation. We are still able to accommodate that even during these these COVID times. And that, of course, means calling in for the time being. But we really encourage residents to do that. If it's too unclear on the website, just email me and I can I can connect you with the city clerk's office. And finally, we had a number of questions that we couldn't get to tonight. I want to thank everyone for their participation. I will follow up with everyone that provided an email address and try to get you a response. Thank you very much for your patience and for visiting with us this evening. I'm just gonna turn things over to His Worship for concluding remarks, but thanks very much for joining us. And over to you, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Owen. And, you know, just before getting on this call, I was on a call with a group of about 60 youth from around the city. And they asked a whole bunch of really tough questions about the the city and the future and and issues similar to what we talked about today, climate change and mental health and and poverty and racism. And then, you know, now we we had this really fascinating and and important set of questions coming in from Ward Seven. I hope it gives you a sense of how dynamic our city is and how many different issues that we're we're dealing with as a community. But I feel so proud of this community. And and again, you know, as talking about how we've come through COVID and and as I've said to many people, I believe we're in the best place in the world to be going through this because of how people have come together and worked together. We have still have lots of uncertainty and lots of challenges ahead to make sure that we're building a strong economy here, that we're creating opportunity and jobs in a very changing global economy that we're positioning ourselves for the future with a great city, with great neighborhoods for people to live in, quality of life and safety. And and one where youth feel like they have a great future for themselves. I have three kids. You know, that's the big motivation I have for being involved in this is to to do whatever I can to help make sure this is a great city for them to grow up in and feel proud of and feel connected to. And that's the same for every kid growing up in this community, regardless of which neighborhood or which background they're in. And it's been, it's been very exciting, very challenging, very complicated in many ways. And tonight's town hall just gives you a sense of of all those issues. So thank you all for engaging. This is part of our local civic democracy, even though we can't gather in person, I'm glad that we can still carry on and 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 have this way of communicating and talking about the issues that matter to you.
Well said, Your Worship. Thanks very much. I want to especially thank the Mayor Clark for joining us because he has, I think, clocked perhaps a local record for the number of hours on a town hall today. So so I especially want to thank him for for making the time. And thank you to all of you who who took the time to write a question and to watch and for those watching in the future, the taped version, appreciate your engagement with us and and your interest in your community. So have a wonderful evening. Thanks for joining us.
And thank you, Counselor Owen, again, for all your work setting this up. And Will in the background, running the show.
Our unpaid technical assistant.
Good night, everybody.